I mean, I have a private.
Okay. Okay, so let's just see what how we can get through the procedures.
I don't mind getting ahead like you understand. I think we have to know what
Right, right.
Like I know the higher county attorneys for the city of thirty when it's
But it's all done by contract.
Okay.
You have a copy for um everybody has this copy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the yellow is uh this for special meeting. Yellow is
That we read. Are you reading, right, or?
Well, the yellow is
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome. Glad to see everybody here this uh this afternoon. We um this is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners. Today, we have our one o'clock workshop. This is Monday, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. It is one oh one P M. If I could have everybody stand for the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will take a brief moment of silence. Uh, this is for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All right, thank you very much. Again, appreciate everybody here today for the workshop. Uh, we've got a couple items to discuss today. Um, one, the Bull Creek lease discussion, and second will be our budget discussion and presentation. Uh, we will have a special meeting to follow this workshop immediately following. So at this time, we'll go ahead and and open up the discussion on the Bull Creek lease discussion. And Mr. Salinas, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, Jorge Salinas, Deputy County Administrator. So I'll go ahead and start with the uh information presentation about the Bull Creek lease. So Flagler County has entered in a few leases for this uh property before. The latest one was in October and uh right after the person entered into a lease, we had a hurricane and uh that uh building was damaged uh in a way that it couldn't be used anymore. So that's why it I got um torn down and now we're here with some a new building that is being coming up. So the timeline for the concessionaire, uh we Heidi and I met with various uh interested parties that wanted to get more information about leasing this property. Um, out of all those meetings, uh one person submitted a proposal back in July June timeframe when the purchasing division had up this RFP out there. That uh person that submitted that RFP uh responds did not complete all the information as that that was needed. So we had to re-advertise again, so that took place between August and September. This time, the person that initially bid uh submitted his second bid and also the White family also submitted their bid. So the purchasing purchasing division evaluated the two proposals and ranked them and uh the White family was the uh uh organization or company that uh won the proposal for this.
Can you restate that? Who won it?
Uh, the White family.
White?
White.
Thank you.
So um again, we Heidi, myself, Robert Round from Purchasing Division, uh Mike Dixon and I met with the White family once they were selected to go over some of the expectations of what was going to be happening in this facility. We talked about the uh the kitchen uh conics that was going to be in the building, the dimensions of the building, um what was expected of the person leasing this property. So the then later on, Mr. Dixon met with the White family to go into the design layout and begin drafting uh just the design layout. Ms. Sarah Spector, our Assistant County Attorney, worked with the White family on this lease agreement. She provided a draft which includes a term, initial term of five years for this lease with two additional five-year terms. The rent for this uh lease of this property, given that it's it's considered a startup, it's going to be at set at five hundred dollars. That's the recommendation. Where we're going to have an annual adjustment in August first uh based on the C P I. And then they would also have to pay a hundred dollars uh into like a common area maintenance or uh what we call a reserve for the osmosis treatment system. So that will be part of that rent. And also, they are going to be responsible for the utilities, uh the grease trap, the communication like internet and uh other services paid by the tenant. This lease also calls for a security deposit of three months, uh which in this case will be fifteen hundred dollars. The use of the building would be for restaurant and concession operations. Um, they would also have camping, body supplies, ice, and propane tank exchange uh for the for the patrons. And it also have a they may be able, they would like to secure, may be able to secure a four C O P liquor license for this facility. We have in the draft lease agreement, uh minimal hours of operations. So we have that it cannot start before five A M. and cannot go beyond eleven P M. But there's also hours of operation between October fifteen and March sixteen, which will be six days a week with a minimum of six hours or March sixteen through October fourteen, which a minimum with a minimum of five days a week and uh four hours per day. This uh agreement also calls for a availability of shutting down for three days uh for holidays, which is Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day, and also allows for an additional week of uh vacation time. All repair and maintenance are responsibility of the tenants in this case.
May I ask? Do you want us to stop you as you're going?
Yes, please. Yes.
So um I just I'm here on page six um under repairs and maintenance. As long as it's defined as to what a repair is and what a maintenance is, this is a new property, so there should be relatively
Minimum, yeah.
small maintenance.
Right.
But because it's a new building, do they get any kind of warranty on the building as far as repairs go or anything? Are they going to have a access to any warranty work at all?
The warranty work will be uh through us, so if there's any thing, anything that is regarding uh related to warranty will be through the county. So it just normal maintenance, if there's any damage done by them or the patrons, they'll have to fix.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's spelled out what what is going to come with with the um the fact it's a new warranty. I I'll use the word warranty. I know I don't if it fits under um if it fits under maintenance or repair, or maybe it's its own subject. But they should get some kind of a warranty with with that new building. I don't know what it is from. I know the kitchen's probably got one.
Can we get the warranty? We get the warranty.
Right, but we should pass it on to them, right? So if they have a warranty claim.
We should take care of that ourselves. Any warranty work.
They have to tell us about it.
Well.
Right?
I'm sure they will.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's under warranty.
It should be in writing that if there's any warranty or any anything that we need um to know about the building, it should be communicated and it could be in one of these sublines on page six.
Okay.
It is? Who said it? Oh, okay. Sorry. All right.
If it's not, we'll I'll talk to Sarah and we'll include it in there.
The fact it's a new building, you know, it 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 could be hanging on for a long time and we don't know about it.
Right.
I have a question too, Jorge.
Yes, go ahead, Sharon.
It appears that, you know, the rental fee, how do we come about that? That's number one where that's um it seems like it's it's been the same fee of everybody we've had for a long time. I don't know if there was a required standard of that fee cost of the monthly rent. Uh, but of course, the cost of everything else, the carrying costs run higher now than they used to. So I don't know why we're not adjust, do we adjust for it or not? That's number one. And number two, did the last uh group have a uh four C four C O P license?
No.
Because that's that's a very different license and there's a lot more liability with it from.
Well, the the let me just, the person that had the lease, I believe, has a four C O P but in different uh business that that they own. I'm not sure if they have it uh they had it on Bull Creek.
I think they had beer and wine. I don't think they had a four C O P.
I'd have to look it up. I don't recall off the top of my head. But it is something that we just wanted to add. It is something that you currently allow at your airport restaurant. You currently allow it at Bing's, at Captain's Barbecue. I know that the city, not to drag them into this, but City of Flagler Beach offers it at Funky Pelican, which is the city's property. And then you have Lopers Golf, uh which is the city's golf course. They also allow liquor, so it's not uncommon.
Right.
So I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah, I'm just checking if they had one before.
No.
Not in that location.
Questioning, I don't think they did.
The the owner or the leasing of the last one had one at a different restaurant, but he did not have one at Bull Creek.
That's what I thought. Okay, I just that's why I wanted to clarify that.
So it it did not exist at Bull Creek.
At that time.
At that time, yeah. So the whites can actually uh acquire that if that's something that they're allowed to do it under this uh agreement. In terms of the five hundred dollar uh rent, um the it was set a while back and uh the Dominich uh family, which were the folks that were uh that got the lease in October twenty twenty-two, um assumed the lease. So they kept the same rate. And then after that, the building has been, you know, demolished, so there's no way to calculate or increase it based on those years that was not in service. In this particular case, since it's a fresh start startup, uh we don't know how the business is going to go or we just want to allow for some some uh availability for making a profit so they can continue to run the business. So that's why it was determined to be at this rate. It's a location, a remote location, and they need to reestablish all the, you know, the patrons again.
I was just wondering what our pro our policy is for these type of, you know, private partner, public, public, public part, you know, partnerships.
Yeah, I think that normally would if it's someplace closer to it's more accessible, um we would probably do a market rate study. In this case, there's not a lot of restaurants out there that we can actually compare, so we have to go with a low rate or we recommend the board to consider a lower rate.
Thank you.
Okay.
So for the alcohol sales, if they do receive alcohol sales, um it doesn't look like it's spelled out contractually that we would consider um entertaining like a percentage of sales in this contract. Is that something that should be added? Is that something the board wants to add? Should they go forward with a four C O P? I'll just bring that up first and then two, I see that we'll adjust annually um the rent, right? So the monthly will go up annually based on C P I, right?
Based on C P I on August first.
Okay, and they'll carry a million dollars in liability.
That is a requirement, yes.
Okay, so I guess my question, and I understand the rent because I know the history of what the rent was out there and the difficulties
Yeah.
with the the location at first, but I guess my question is if there is a C O P, a four C O P added, is that something that the board wishes to discuss? Because how do we do it currently with our other restaurants? Is there, I don't think there's a percentage taken. But I I know that maybe, you know, I don't know what the what the what the, you know, I'll just put it out there. I don't know what the best, you know.
My biggest concern is the um, I would say probably because it's such a distant location from the majority of the population that there could be uh the need for some kind of security with alcohol. I don't, you know, you know what I'm saying? I just I'm just concerned about it being way out there. What if there's an incident or an accident or something like that? And that could be in any situation. And I just I'm just, it was just unusual because I didn't think there was any out there before. I did have clients that were out there often, uh and they love the place and they have a captured audience there. But if you get people that are are a little bit more haphazard or or, you know, just like at the beach, there's always a police nearby and how far is our closest police station? Because with alcohol, there tends to be, once in a while, there's an opportunity for uh issues.
A four C O P um is a four liquor li liquor license that allows them to sell on premise and also somebody can buy and take home. So that, you know, it's
So it's like a package store as well.
Right, yes.
So they could open a package store in there.
I don't know about a package store, but it's uh the license allows the person to buy and take with them, go on a boat and take it with them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then in terms of what uh Vice Chair Pennington said, um it's up to the board if they want to add or consider a percentage of the sales of alcohol. It doesn't seem like we've done it before, but it's up to the board to do that.
Having been involved in the Funky Pelican deal, um yes, I do think it's a trend that we should move towards. And um I will tell you, however, administratively, it's a nightmare. So if you don't have somebody in accounting standing over the golf course was the same way. We could not get a P and L out of that golf course to save our lives. So we were constantly in and out of breach of contract. So if if it does happen, it needs to be very clearly specified what day we want their gross receipt report, when we expect to be paid, and it has to be cleared out in a timeline so that we we can go after breach if if we need to. So I think it's um more of a it's administratively a little rough.
It'll be a little
We would have to do it monthly. I would never suggest doing it quarterly or annually. It would be just like them paying their sales tax on their food. Um, it would just be another check that's cut to the county. It should never offset um it, no, that wouldn't happen anyway. That, never mind. But I I'm 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 okay with leaning towards that trend. It's not unpopular. I mean, lots of people do it. They got a good rate, they've got a good setup, they've got a beautiful location, and they should be able to share in some of it. I would not suggest we do it on year one or two, that we phase it in uh to a future years. So there's some history that can be built up because I don't think we should go after, you know, one percent if one percent of not a whole lot is worth it. But um maybe uh do you know if they'd be open to a a sliding
Yeah.
type of a
The thing is that you don't have to decide today because it's not something that it's included in the lease today. If it becomes available, then we can probably modify that to include that. Because it's a may secure, they may secure a four C O P license.
Oh, I see.
It's a maybe, not a definite.
Okay, very good.
So we can include it if if they do secure it to come back to the board for that consideration. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. So very good discussion. Anything that you would like to change or modify in a besides uh the items that were mentioned? The warranty.
Who's going to manage the R V portion of it? I remember last time it was sort of loosely tied, wasn't it, to the restaurant operators?
Yeah, the R V
helping out.
It's not going to be managed by this contract or this
Okay.
tenant. It would be most likely by the county or uh having a somebody, a host there that, but it'd be, it's not considered in this contract. The only benefit that they would receive is having the patrons from all these other R V
Okay, it seemed like the old one, there was some sort of tie to the R V portion.
It's all done through online.
Now.
Just like the cabins.
It just seemed like the last, when I was out there last before it got torn down, they were having to help.
But the host is a good idea.
Yeah.
Is that like a reservation center?
Online.
Reservation's online.
Online?
Yeah, we have it online with the our parks department. So the next uh couple slides is just
I'm sorry, can we go back? I'm sorry, page five. We're starting to talk here about improvements or additions, uh working with the general contractor. The leasing insurance issuance of a building permit for any improvements.
Yeah, so i if it's any, if it's a minor thing that doesn't require a permit, uh it goes through our uh General Services Director.
Right.
But if it's something that requires a permit, it has to come back to the county uh before anything can be changed or modified. That's what that uh it's meant to say there.
Okay, in writing, for all other work, leasing must obtain written approval by the county administrator.
Right. Okay. So just a little bit of a timeline and and refresher on the history and the funding. So we have uh this project is a one point five million dollar project. One point two came through the Hurricane Recovery uh Grant and uh two hundred and fifty thousand came through the general fund and the remainder seventy thousand dollar around that uh range uh through a park impact fees. So this building is not four thousand square feet, it's four thousand eight hundred and ninety-six square feet. And it would be uh would have a screen porch. Uh, there'd be some repairs to the seawall. I'll just talk about that in the next slide. And uh we have, um let me just go to the next slide, so it has a little bit more details. So in July, this uh current month, uh we are planning to work on the form, the pour, and the finishing, the concrete pad to make that available. Once that concrete pad is in place, we can schedule uh the building uh to be delivered and also uh the conics box. A few tasks will take place between July and September. That would be finishing the site work, building retention area, building the retaining wall with the sheet pilings and the concrete caps. In August, uh we're expecting to remove the old wooden public docks and also receive and install the floating docks. September twenty twenty-five, we expect to get delivery of the Kinnich uh the kitchen conics in the middle building. And then there's some items that don't have a date yet that we to be determined, which is install the septic and drainage drainage field, the new well, and also remove the old wooden docks on the south side uh where uh it was mainly used for the upstairs apartment, upstairs apartment that existed in that location. And then we have in October twenty twenty-five, which is the building will be erected and this uh we'll start doing the build out for the interior.
Do we have a guesstimate date towards that we're shooting for for the
For the completion?
Completion?
Um, I don't know. Heidi, have you heard from Mike after this October?
I think it was on the slide before that that shows the grant closeout being in March. It definitely needs to be done before July first. But if we back it up a couple months, we can go through that process of doing the um closeout of the grant, making sure we have canceled checks and everything, so.
Okay. And the general fund monies will actually not be applied to the building. There's going for other projects out there that the grant can't be applied to, right?
The thought was that the money, if it, we can't use the grant funds, but whatever general fund or park impact fees could supplement the amount that we can pull out of E S L for the land that we acquired. You can take up to ten percent. Those monies can be applied there to work on the development of that other site that we acquired.
Got it.
Yeah, ten percent of E S L.
I guess my question for Sean and Sarah. Lessons learned from past leases and um and and situations we found ourselves in, how did that find its way into modifications or corrections and updates to our current lease? What have we, have we put any lessons learned into this?
Well, uh, yes, I mean, we we have an indemnity. We were having a workshop as opposed to conversations. So I I think this has public support. We're not tearing down trees in a popular park or anything. So this process itself is the airing, the transparency. I think that was a a big lesson learned.
That's true. All right.
I thought this was one of the better leases I've ever seen and it had the force majeure in it.
And I do think there was comments made about the the percentage and and being a startup in a very lightly populated area. I think we give them some time to get established.
Any startup takes time, uh you know, you have to have that patience and I appreciate that. I just wanted to know what our standard choices were from start to. And we've got a brand new facility there, so they're really walking into not the same as the last owners had.
Yes.
Was a tired building, which had its own issues. And now they're getting a brand new beautiful building that we've all seen. So that should help them as well, be a good kickoff for them.
That is correct.
And I would say on the heels of Commissioner Carney's comments, maybe we develop some type of um procedure since it's a brand new building with a brand new kitchen. So if they do find issues, we have a reporting process in place so that that repairs can be made under warranty. Even though we're the the owners, you know, they'll be the ones using it and being reporting those. So we want to make sure that those get reported and and that they're aware of our the warranty timelines so that things can be um, and I'm sure our our people will inspect and and do that as well, but maybe there's But maybe there's something to highlight that process, so we make sure we get things covered under warranty.
You know, that's being a good steward too, as an owner. Because it's half, it's half, you know, our needs to assist them to be successful regardless.
Right. So we'll include that suggestion, recommendation by Commissioner Carney into the lease, and this lease will come back as a regular agenda item here in the near future for your consideration.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I wish them luck.
Is there going to be, there's not going to be a gap, right? When it's ready, they're ready? There's not going to be like a time when they have to pay for something they're not ready to occupy?
No, once it's ready, I think they have 30 days, according to the lease agreement, to occupy the building and start operating it.
And did we solidify a kitchen design? Was it different than the last one that was brought to us?
Right, the original design was our staff looking to bringing a conics, kitchen conics box. And this, some feedback that we received from the commissioners and working with the whites, it got reduced to a more... It's adequate for the location and the service, so that got modified, the design got modified.
Thank you.
Made it workable, absolutely.
Any other comments?
Do you know about how much we saved by doing that? Did you get a new quote?
We did get a new quote. I just don't know the number right now.
I don't know the number off the top of my head.
We can get that information and share it.
Thank you.
We will.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on this topic, come up, state your name. Welcome, Sarah.
Good to have you back, Andy. Ron Long, Aldo Drive. Couple of quick things. First, I want to let you, it's not way out in the boonies, it's not way out there. There's plenty of people out there. We have a lot of people out there. And with that, with that, there are people chomping at the bit for this place to open back up. I don't think they're going to have too big of a trouble bringing people in. With that said, I think there's a group of like 15 men who have, who used to have breakfast there every morning. They will be right back. So where I'm going with a lot of this, I have issue with the lease amount. I'm not trying to knock anybody's head off, but I did a little research. It turns out like, I think Palm Coast is doing $24 to $28 a square foot. Let's just be nice and say $20 a square foot out there. You're looking at six grand a month. Six grand as opposed to 500. Like I said, I don't want to knock their heads off. I know they're just getting started. And I know they have a lot of investment that they have to do to get this thing up and running. They're going to have to put in the chairs, the tables, all that kind of stuff. But if we're starting out at 500 and I'm hearing that the CPI is going to be the increase, CPI is like 2% a year. So after their 15-year lease is up, we will have raised their rent by 150 bucks. I just see that as not the best business practice in this. Again, I'm not trying to cut their heads off with this, but I just think there needs to be a, maybe a readdress of the actual rent amount. And with the, yeah, the, the cut of the liquor sales, that's a great idea. It's a great revenue. But again, you know, if it's a restaurant, you're not going to see huge liquor sales like you see at bars and stuff of that nature. So I don't know how big of a cut that would be, but I just ask that we maybe readdress the rent amount. Don't kill them on it, but maybe look at it again.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dice. Something else, Mr. Salinas?
Just wanted to share with the board that the White family is here. If you want to have any, you have any questions for them, or I would like them to come up and introduce themselves?
Okay, well, great, thank you. They're more than welcome to come up. And I guess introduce yourselves so that we can put, right, the face to the name and congratulate you. And welcome. Thank you for being here.
I'm Josh White.
I'm Pam White. I'm the mom.
I'm Jessica Norton Henry.
Again, thank you for being here. Did you want to add anything? Talk a little bit about the process or what you're planning? Or are you going to keep it a surprise? Speak to the mic so we can make sure we get it.
We discussed in the other meetings how we want to cater to the farmers and the fishermen and like southern food. And as far as the four COP, well, if we can't get that, we'll do the two COP, and I think that's what they had before. But, I mean, it's not definite, but that's what we do want to go towards. And I also think that it's, we can only have a percentage of so much alcohol. We can't have like, yeah, 49%, I think maybe. So, and we were very excited about the low rent because it makes us feel more secure, like we are not going to fail. I feel like you're setting us up for success with the lower rent, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody?
Oh, well, I'll say, I've never met the Whites, but it's nice to meet you. And I've heard a lot of people are happy that a family from out in that area will be running Bull Creek again. And they're, they're kind of in tune and excited. And I think one of the good things about having this family run this is one of the, the last operation out there had a difficult time keeping employees. It's a long drive into the area. There's not a good employee group out there. So it'd be nice that you're a family working at this together. And it would be nice to see it back. And I think they're all, I know the longstanding families are excited. They seem to have you running it.
And as an old restaurante, I know you've waited on me many times somewhere else. So I want to wish you all the success. Running a restaurant is a very big challenge. I was in the restaurant business as a worker, and I know how hard you work. There is no reason to ever not respect, and I'm excited for you. I wish, I will, I will send all my customers that are out there to come make sure, to visit as often as they can. I think you will have success, and I think you'll do a good job of running it, and I'm excited for you. So I'm looking forward to your great success. We'll celebrate that when we can really shine. Because I know you can shine. You can make it happen. So thank you for being willing to hear our concerns. We want to make sure everybody's on the same page at the start, and that way there's no problems later. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
We, you know, the county likewise is investing with the new acquisition to be able to support more campers during season. So I'm sure that additionally will help, you know, bring more people to the county and to the restaurants. So little by little, right, it's going to become a really nice spot out there. And thank you for, for your work and for the investment you're putting in out there as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
One thing I wanted to mention, it's signed, section 27 on signs allows them one by the waterway and one at the main entrance. I don't know who manages the one up at the sign at 2006 and 305. I don't know if that's an area we should allow them to put a sign. We currently have a county sign, but it's brown. It's hard to read, and it might be a good place to put a Bull Creek, kind of a bigger arrow sign, so that people, drive people down that road. I don't know if that would fall under them to be able to do, or it's a county sign now, or... But I just wanted to mention that area, 2003, oh, six and 305. Could use a better sign so that people would actually know that's the road to turn to to get down there.
Directional sign?
You can't see that sign.
No.
You can't see it.
There's another sign coming from the west side too, out there, that says like Bull Creek Restaurant.
Yeah, I know Three Bananas has a sign. And they're in a different county, right?
You can read that one.
If we could find a place to put them signs to drive people down that way, you know, whether, allow them to put it, that'd be great. Because I think, you know, you're going to need that for all the people coming up and down 305 who don't normally go out there.
So that's off-site signage. Do we have an ordinance that talks about off-site signage?
We do, and we'll work with the whites to identify locations where we can put it in our right-of-way. But it does need to conform with our ordinance, so we'll work with them.
And thank you very much.
It is wild that another restaurant, another county has a sign.
I never saw any place.
Just real quick to address the lease, the monthly lease. Again, it is a way to deal with that, and that is by profit sharing. So you don't just need liquor. You can have liquor and food. Funky Pelican came in at, anything over $1 million was 1%, half a percent. There's all kinds of sliding scales out there, but that is correct. Mr. Long is correct. You cannot keep up at the cost of living or the CPI. So we either need to get P and Ls from the owners and hold off for a couple of years, or revisit this at the end of year five. But we won't know until we know, so... But that is the way to do it, is to share in the profit.
So for alcohol, because I agree on the alcohol, because it needs to be done with all of our leases, and it hasn't been done. I mean, it's a possibility that you could put, if they get a four C, that, you know, it could be put into the lease now, like whatever the percentages or acceptable percentage they could work on, so that we make that a practice going forward with our other restaurants as well. But we haven't. And all restaurants, all of our restaurants, I think, all renew for 15 years, don't they? Five, five, and five? So it'll be some time before you can ever address the other leases. So, so it's up to you. I'm not opposed to it on the alcohol sales. I don't know about their food sales, but...
Not food sales. I don't think food sales.
No, but... They all do it. Everybody else does it, but then you need to address the $500 a month.
Yeah, the most efficient restaurants are netting 15% off food sales right now. So that's, that's, that comes from a high restaurant.
We're only talking about a half a percent. We're not talking about...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with it if you want to go ahead and start looking at that, you know, and go ahead and maybe have legal look at language added into.
Otherwise, what's the, what's the reasoning for the, is it an automatic five-year after the first five and an automatic five?
That's what I was just reading, and the place where you would address it is if you abide by the first, if you, if you have the first five years as it is, the, this initial term is through July 31st, 2030. Just modify the renewal terms so that we can have an opportunity to look at it without an automatic renewal, but just have, revisit it to be able to look at the potential.
You're leaving it open for adjustment depending on what happens.
They're committed to the first five years, and they know that they, that that's what they can work with. Like they need some security, a five-year window. And then I'll leave it up to legal to figure out the correct terminology for being able to revisit a, what y'all are talking about, some type of profit share.
I think we talked about if they get the four COP. I don't know that we would want to enter into the beer and wine part. I don't know. That's a discussion. So any, any liquor?
Well, I'm saying food and liquor, but not until after the first five years, when we have some history. Because we're setting the pace for the next
Future.
five years. So we may not be here. We're not going to probably be here. So we're setting the pace. That's all we're doing. It doesn't mean it's going up. It just has a term that instead of auto-renewing, automatic renewal, that they, that we all come together again, and we sit and we visit terms. That's all.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. All right, that will close discussion and move to our budget discussion and presentation.
Well, good afternoon, Chair, Commissioners, and the public that's here in attendance today. I'm pleased to present a tentative budget for fiscal year 2026. This budget reflects our continued commitment to responsible stewardship of public funds, alignment with our strategic priorities, and investment in the core services that matter most to our residents. It supports public safety, infrastructure, quality of life, once again, while reducing the millage rate for the fifth consecutive year. We've got a lot of information to cover in the upcoming slides, but feel free to stop me if you need me to clarify something, or if you have any questions or comments. Thank you, and we'll go ahead and get started. This budget is a result of thoughtful guidance by the board throughout the last year or nine months, beginning with the strategic direction that you provided last December. We've welcomed public input at multiple stages of the process, ensuring transparency and community involvement. The series of budget workshops and meetings concluded on July 2nd, helping shape a fiscally responsible plan that reflects both board priorities as well as resident needs. Key upcoming dates that remain part of the budget process include today's presentation of the tentative budget, and then we're going to be setting a millage rate a little bit later. In August, the board will consider adoption of the proposed budget and the capital improvement plan. And then the first public hearing is scheduled for September 11th, followed by final public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 26 budget on September 22nd. So although I'm presenting the tentative budget, it is still able to have changes made. So if there is something that you would like changed or added, we will make those changes and bring it back to you at your next budget hearing. So it'll be presented in that final proposed budget adoption on August 4th. So the fiscal year 26 tentative budget aligns closely with the board's policies and strategic priorities. It strengthens our financial position with an increase in general fund reserves. And it includes, as I mentioned, the fifth consecutive millage rate reduction. The budget invests in public safety with funding for 15 firefighter paramedics, three sheriff deputies. We've got one CAD radio technician. It also supports the transition of the 911 dispatch center coming over to the board. It honors the requests from our constitutional officers. It funds three new positions at our Nexus Center. It provides for employee benefits as well as a 2% cost of living adjustment, and it continues critical infrastructure investments in beach, roadway, and stormwater improvements.
Ms. Petito?
Sure.
Wanted to clarify too, under the second to bottom where we talked about the 2% cost of living adjustment, if I remember correctly, we, at the last meeting, allocated $500,000 to reserve to be used for merit pay increases once our new merit system is approved.
That's correct. It's built into this budget where we have that set aside.
So just wanted to make sure it's not specifically stated that for the employees that there's a, once we work out how the merit system will be worked, once HR comes up with that plan. Thank you, Charlie. That we'll have those funds in reserves to be specifically allocated for that purpose.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So here's a restatement of our strategic plan. A strong strategic plan is essential to building the budget process as it provides that framework for aligning financial decisions with the board's long-term goals and the community priorities. It ensures that resources are allocated purposefully, guiding investment in services, staffing, and infrastructure that deliver the greatest value to our residents. So the fiscal year 26 tentative budget reflects a strong alignment with those strategic priorities. Through careful planning and collaboration, we've ensured that our financial resources are dedicated to initiatives that drive our mission forward, enhances community well-being, and it supports sustainable growth. So when you're looking at each one of these focus areas, it's further broken down with the level of financial support being provided for the upcoming fiscal year. We're excited to share the highlights of the fiscal year 26 tentative budget. The budget is balanced with a rate of 8.18 mils. This represents the fifth consecutive year of millage decrease with a decrease of .0543 mils. The proposed rate is a 10.12% increase over fiscal year 25, which is generating $135.6 million. Key allocations include increased funding for employee benefits such as healthcare, COLA, and FRS, the Florida retirement system. It also includes some much-needed public safety personnel within fire rescue, radio CAD, personnel for the Nexus Center, and the transfer of 28 employees from the emergency communications dispatch. The board's expense budget is set at $91.5 million. It includes support to the constitutional officers, which provides an average increase of 11% over fiscal year 25. It also includes investment into the Flagler County Sheriff's Office personnel with the addition of three deputies, and they will have the reduction of the 28 dispatch staff members. We continue to make significant investments in infrastructure improvements with 12 point... We continue to make significant investments in infrastructure improvements with $12.55 million being set aside for capital projects. We have $2.7 million for capital equipment replacement. And then additionally, we have other projects funded with non-ad valorem funds, as well as program costs for stormwater and beach management, which are actually shown in operating accounts rather than capital. So there is a little bit of difference. In that $12.55 million, it does include some of the road projects that we have planned, but stormwater and the beach are actually shown in operating accounts. These budgetary decisions reflect our commitment to fostering growth, improving quality of life, and it ensures a prosperous future for our community.
Well, Heidi, I have to take exception with some of that. Some of the reductions we've made in this budget are going to hurt the public. Some of the reductions, they're going to feel right away. For instance, reduced services at the library, they're going to feel that right away. The other things, you're not going to feel for a couple of years yet. And primarily is stormwater. We've cut that. The road maintenance, we've, we didn't, we're insufficient on that one. And the beach replenishment projects are not funded. So, and we'll feel that downstream. So I worry about that. As was said here, we're not going to be here for 10 years, or 20 years up here. New people are going to come, and they're going to have to deal with this downstream. But it's not, we haven't sufficiently made infrastructure gains in this budget. And I'm just afraid what's going to hurt, that's going to hurt the county, so.
We do have some, to your point, we do have some funding set aside for the beach, stormwater, and roadways. The total amount, I think we have set aside between all three of those is somewhere around 14 million, 14.1 million. However, to your point, it might not be ongoing. It is using some one-time funds. But there is money being set aside in the fiscal year 26 budget. We do need to work on, probably coming up with some more dedicated funding that is recurring moving forward. But it is the start of funding, but it doesn't mean that we stop the conversation on trying to come up with creative ways to continue to move that needle. Because, as you said, we do have challenges ahead in the way of roadways. Between your road condition, we'll have more information probably in January, but you're probably looking at somewhere about 10 to 12 million a year just in roadways that we probably need to start setting aside, and probably an equal amount to that in stormwater, and an equal amount to that in the beaches. So all of them are important, but this year does have us at least building and starting to put money towards that. But we do need to look at it and continue to build over the next couple of years. I don't disagree. While property valuation growth remains strong, it is at 10.12% for fiscal year 26. It does reflect a decline from the last two previous years. You may recall, in fiscal year 25, we were seeing 13.93% increase, and in fiscal year 24, it was a little bit higher, it was 14.12%. This trend is something that we continue to monitor closely, as it may signal a gradual cooling off of the market that could impact future revenue growth. So we are cognizant of that, it is part of the forecast when we start building the budget is to look at some of those economic impacts that we face as a county, and not just locally, but what we see at the state or at the federal level. So increasing our reserves is a prudent step towards enhancing cash flow and liquidity, while it also reinforces our commitment to long-term financial stability. Maintaining strong reserves supports our AA+ bond rating. It does ensure that we remain resilient as a coastal community, particularly given the uncertainty surrounding potential changes that may be coming, whether it's through FEMA or State of Florida. In a time when economic forecasts remain somewhat uncertain, it also, building reserves is a responsible strategy to safeguard essential services and to position us to respond effectively to any future challenges. So we have, looking at this, our reserves did go up. The restricted reserves went up the most, and that's really because of the increase moving natural resource funding from operating to reserves, because it is geographically restricted. Some of that comes to you from, like, Grand Swamp, where we have revenues that are received. It is restricted, so we moved it into that area. So that's why you're seeing it appear as such a huge increase there. These are the reserves, it's just shown as a pie chart, so you can see each portion, the financial stability is the money that we set aside as a coastal community, we'd like to get to 3/12ths. The contingency is the money that's set aside, it represents 5% of our operating budget for general fund, and then that restricted is restricted in purpose. And this is a look at our bond rating. As a county with a recently achieved AA+ bond rating, we take great pride in the strength and credibility that that rating represents. It reflects sound fiscal management and long-term planning. However, we are aware of some ongoing discussions at the national level regarding potential changes to the methodology used in calculating bond ratings, particularly those that place greater emphasis on reserve levels, that's kind of what they're looking at. I know John Brower, our Financial Services Director, recently attended the Florida Government Finance Officers Association, and there was breakout sessions talking about how they review and look at bond ratings. Right now, it doesn't negatively impact us because of our healthy reserves, but it is something that they're putting more and more emphasis on. So it's another reason why we want to make sure that we're maintaining adequate reserves. So here's a look at our debt service payments for fiscal year 26. A few things to note on here. If you look at line two, which is your county transportation trust, this is used for equipment leases, which was determined not to be debt by the clerk's office. So that is actually falling off of this list and will be moved into the operating expense rather than showing up as debt. In the middle of the screen, you see the bond capital improvement for the government services complex. Last year, we refinanced that debt, which will have us saving close to $1 million over the remaining term of that debt because of that refinance. And then towards the bottom, you see something for bond for ESL, it was the 2008 referendum. We're able to pay off some of that debt early, so you see that being applied there. This chart shows that we have just under $50 million in outstanding debt principal. It's right around like 49.75. One of these accounts will be closed out in 2029, with another following up in 2033. The bulk of it ages out in 2035, which is about nine more years of debt service payments. This pie chart shows the fiscal year 26 tentative budget, $329 million, excuse me, It's got all of the sources of revenue broken down by category. And then this pie chart shows the fiscal year 26 budget with the expenses by activity type. And then this budget table provides a snapshot of the fiscal year 26 balanced budget, offering a clear view of projected revenues and expenditures. It highlights how resources are allocated to support core services, strategic priorities, and long-term financial health of the county.
Good question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can I have a, okay. Under the cultural recreation, can you tell me what that incurs for $6,838,000 and $750?
It should be a combination of all of your parks and rec, anything related to libraries, arts, things like that.
All that, okay.
It's all piled into one. These are the accounts as established through the state, so it's kind of, we plug them into the different categories.
It fits into that category, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Could you also explain for the public and myself, a broad term for cash carry forward?
So I have my financial folks here if I really mess this up, but cash carry forward is typically the money that's sitting there at the end of a year. It could be already allocated for another purpose, but you might not have closed out that purpose. So it's funding from another year that gets rolled up at year-end and gets carried forward into the next fiscal year. So some things that you could think about, like if you have capital projects and you've already committed to spending those funds, but you've not spent them yet, all of that gets rolled up into that cash carry forward process, and then it gets reallocated into the next budget as cash carry forward.
And the last one would be inter-fund transfers, because that's another.
Large one, yeah.
That's a unique one to me.
So your inter-fund transfers is money that largely gets, some of it is your debt service payments and stuff like that. Some of it could be in the form of payments to your constitutional officers. Like, when you looked at our budget, and I don't know if, failed to comment on it, I think it was on this pie chart here. See where it says it includes the 5.2 million for the tax collector? It's in our general government thing, but it's really a constitutional officer, so you would think that it would be transferred to constitutionals. Some of that goes in the way of inter-fund transfers, so it doesn't, it's just the way that we report some of that. So it's a combination of like debt service and maybe money that's transferred.
Got a lot of catch-alls to it, okay.
It's got a little bit of a catch-all.
But it's just from one fund to another?
Correct.
Okay.
And then this is just a look at, you know, what is a fund. Basically, it's an accounting or reporting tool, records the fiscal activities of specific revenues and expenditures, and how the activity aligns with the fund's balanced budget. So a lot of what we talk about is general fund, because that's your tax dollars, your ad valorem is part of that. But it's basically, the budget's made up of two different parts. So you have your governmental funds, and then you have proprietary funds. So those government funds are used to account for tax-supported governmental activities. So you have like your general fund, your special revenue, debt service, and then capital projects. And then when you look at the proprietary funds, there's two different types. You have enterprise or internal service fund. So like, the enterprise funds would be used to account for government business-type activities. This relates specifically to funds which are supported by fees and charges. So like, think of the airport, which is an enterprise fund, or your building department, where they charge fees and services. So they're not part of the general fund, which is your tax dollars, they're self-supporting of their own initiative. And then when you look at the internal service funds, the accounting for that is for financing of goods or services provided by a department or agency to another department or agency as another governmental unit or governmental units. It's more of a cost reimbursement type thing. So that's more like when we set up our health insurance fund, it's one of those where it touches multiple departments. So it is a internal service fund. And even if you look at Fleet, when Fleet does repairs or oil changes, things like that, where they end up billing departments for those services and the money comes back. So it's just a difference of how the different funds are captured, accounted for, and utilized. So just to give you a little overview of.
Thank you.
So here's a pie chart showing the tentative budget broken down by each fund. Again, the general fund is the largest portion, it does include your ad valorem taxes as part of that. This is a pie chart demonstrating the amount of revenue generated by the corresponding millage rate for property tax revenues. The largest being the general fund operating budget, and then you've got your ESL operating, your debt service at the bottom. And then this chart shows how the ad valorem taxes are allocated between operating expense and debt service. It provides a clear breakdown of how your tax dollars support the day-to-day services, while also meeting our long-term financial obligations.
Does this show, when we go on to the percentages, does it show that we're more, for a better word, cost-effective rather than cost-deficient?
I don't know if that's what this necessarily shows. This is just showing you the allocation of just your ad valorem taxes, it's not your entire budget. So it's just a segment of it, just showing how it's broken down to support, whether it's the general fund operating or.
Just funny how they sort of even out a little bit when you add them up on the side.
Yeah.
Balances it.
So this pie chart displays all the general fund revenues by category, with property tax being the largest component. You do have a large makeup of that cash carry forward that we talked about before, which is just money allocated from the previous year that kind of rolls into it. And then this table shows the general fund revenue history over the four-year period. And while it does reflect some overall growth, I think it's important to note that the current and future fiscal year includes that cash carry forward amount. So this can create the appearance of like an inflated revenues, when in fact, it represents the use of previous collected funds to support some of those ongoing operations and priorities. So it looks like it's got an increase, but it's really because of that cash carry forward amount.
Which is probably spoken for, correct?
It is, yeah, yeah. And then this is the pie chart displaying the tentative budget, general fund expense by function. Then here's another look at the general fund expense history. This includes the constitutional officers, the board's departments, our debt service, as well as our reserves. On average, this is a 14% increase. The sheriff's law enforcement displays relatively flat, but that's because we removed 2.8 million out of his budget for the emergency communications personnel, and we've added it to ours. So if you look at, his looks really flat, and ours looks very high when you look at our increase. But in addition to the 2.8 million for the dispatch that was pulled out and moved, we also have some other large amounts for beach funding, roads, health insurance, which do add to our increase. We have got a note there on the bottom, 3.4 for beach funding, $4 million for County Road 304, and then the health insurance reserves. So all of that is going towards that $14 million increase on our side. And then this is a look at the CRAs, the payments that are made by fiscal year. You can see that gradual increase. As CRA values increase above their base value, that's the amount that we pay back to the city based on that increase. The largest one being the Palm Coast Town Center CRA. Increase in payments from last year over this year is about $356,000. I think the town center is another 10 years, well, nine years, it'll be 2035 as well.
It's 20 years old now, yeah.
And then here's a look at capital preservation projects that we've got planned for next year. This is all part of the general fund. And some of these are on here, well, there's some decisions that we need to make when it comes to the HHS property with whether or not the intended future use is going to look like, and if we are able to continue operating that facility as an IT office or something like that, it is going to require some refresh and some renovations there. But not really a lot of big-ticket items on here, aside from a roof at the Princess Place Legacy House. And then we added in there the Lehigh Trail resurfacing from Colbert Lane to Old Kings Road. That's to go back with some new asphalt. You've got some tree roots that's caused some work to be done there. And then we've met with the SOE on a current renovation to give her some space utilizing some currently maybe not the most optimum or efficient space. So we're going to go back down there and do some renovation works. We've got that built into this.
Is there any addition for parking?
Not for parking, no.
I don't see anything about parking here anywhere. I know we'll have some space, of course, by the Nexus Center once that's done. But it seems to be a little shy of space, especially when you have the SOE's office in action during voting. It's really been a challenge for them and for the voters. I'm just wondering, I know it's a really weird angle there too, so it doesn't make it any easier.
Yeah. When you look at where their office is to the due east, you've got a lot of wetlands. So you're not really going to be able to increase that area. The only area that you could potentially put in some parking, it was part of the original design and part of the original scope of work. In front of the courthouse, you see, there's actually light poles that were installed, but they never completed the parking. It's right there along, in front of the courthouse but closer to State Road 100. So if you look at kind of like the internal Loop Road, between the Loop Road and State Road 100, you've got kind of a grassy field. You'll see the teepee gets set up there for the powwow. You'll see a school bus there for pack the bus or stuff the bus. That area there was supposed to be additional parking overflow. It wasn't constructed because we had a shortfall when this complex was being developed. So the lights went in, but hasn't been paved. So it's really the only area that we have right now for consideration for additional parking.
Could you, can you talk with the supervisor of elections on what the impact will be on Cattlemen's? I would hope that that would become a voting area once Cattlemen's is redone. Will that not take some Benel pressure off of her, off of that, off of this office?
Good.
I think it could. We probably would have to talk to her to see what kind of impact that would be. Because I thought that there were other locations in Benel, but I think she has a responsibility to be open as well. So I don't know, I don't know enough about her operation to know what kind of an impact it would have or not have.
There's a church way out in Benel somewhere for, for voting. But I think, just like Flagler Beach, I think early voting is here. So if she could branch off into Cattlemen's, it's not going to be for another year, but if she could branch off into Cattlemen's or set something up there, it might be well worth it as a secondary location for early voting.
If I remember correctly, the SOE's office is a requirement in early voting. So other than.
Anyone would not be, other than staff for those times.
Right.
But it might be a convenience for the residents too, especially that live out west.
Flagler Beach doesn't have early voting.
Yeah, they do.
They do.
Well, not for their, not for their election.
At the church.
Okay.
Not for their.
Not in their city hall, no, church.
It's a, it's a constant juggling.
Yeah, it's, it's a big challenge and. Over here, when you see the lines coming all the way down where people can't even move, and protesters or campaigners, it really, I, I spent the time here, and it's really challenging. And I did speak with the supervisor about it. And having been, you know, one of their volunteers for many, many, many years, it, the growth has caused pressure in that office tremendously to serve all the residents. It's a trick. And we've got to see what we can do to help them out because it's really rough.
I think once that facility comes online, we'll have conversations with her about setting up a potential, another early voting site.
It's just concerning to me.
Or polling station, yeah.
Because it does affect everybody who comes to this building too. So.
Can I, Carlos, go back one slide. So within the softball fields, the ball fields out at the fairgrounds, within their maintenance, is there any capital funds set aside for that this year or just maintenance of what's keeping the fields operating?
There is no capital funds. This, it would appear here.
Right.
There were capital. So they only have their regular operating.
So anything would be, we would need to target next year. The, I've been, I've had some conversations with the, the managers of the fields, of the, of the sports groups that use the fields. So they have some, some specific concerns that I have yet to meet with them. But the, the discussion would be to plan for the next budget and to try and, and combine, put together a list of what they, they think are needed improvements.
I would probably.
With the operating fund, you know, one of their biggest gripes is the difference in level between the infield and outfield. But can't we fix that with our operating fund?
I don't know.
I don't think we need a special fund to fix that.
That's not specifically what I'm talking about, but.
Well, the other thing is the child's playground, you know, in between the fields. That's, and then of course adding fields.
I think it's more maintenance, but it would fall under CIP, things that, that are just above, beyond replacing something. But I don't have that list, but my, just trying to get direction for when I do meet with, you know, with the coaches and stuff on, on that it could be for next year if they, if it exceeds a certain amount anyway.
Is that baseball, football, all of them?
It's the baseball fields that we have out at the fairgrounds.
So if you are able to get a list, if you could just share that with me and we could work with the department responsible. They may have some funding in, built into their operating that might be able to handle some of the low-hanging fruit. But if not, we can add some of that to the CIP as we continue to develop that.
Okay.
So you guys will approve the CIP, but it is, we only fund one year. So this is what, what you're looking at is what would be funded for the next year. But there is an opportunity to, you know, work with the user groups to try to build it in. So if you could share whatever you have, that'd be great. So this is a, just a continuation. This is now the, the new construction and any technology improvements. So we set aside some funding. You'll have a new fire station popping up at 305 and 100. It's going to be co-located on the site with the public work. So we've got a fuel depot going there for unleaded and diesel to help provide fuel to our county employees that work out there. We've set aside funding for more fire station expansion. And then we've got the expansion of dispatch. And then additional funding, bless you, additional funding for fire station, some improvements that are needed out at the fire training tower in the way of a security fence and a vehicle storage building. We've got money allocated in here for some stormwater design work. We've got some money set aside for 304 resurfacing. And then more money coming out for 304 resurfacing. So some of that's split funded between half cent and your gas tax. And then your beach funding is in a different, again, that's in your program funding. So that's not covered here. And then this is a list of special assessments. Just looking at the list, although the four at the bottom, we're not levying anything this year. They are still active, but we're just not levying anything for fiscal year 26. And there is one increase to solid waste, but that's based on the contractual increase for providing solid waste collection and disposal.
Ma'am?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, so we're on the page. Sorry, we're on the page. So could we take a minute to talk about the MSBU on beach renourishment? Because Attorney Sean Moreland put out a July 3rd memo that talked about the timeline, timeline for a special assessment. And there was some talk back and forth about using an MSBU for construction versus using an MSBU for maintenance. I felt that funding was funding. The, the idea that I put forward included an MSBU, and I believe that Commissioner Hanson came up with the 160. I know that we spent copious hours and resources working that program, educating our constituents. And I think it's a missed opportunity, or is it a missed opportunity for 2026? You gave us a timeline. You suggested that we did meet the approval or the requirement on January 10th to get that certified copy of the resolution to the proper Department of Revenue. Then we talked about needing a special meeting in, in September. This is part of, I think, what Commissioner Hanson wants, which is the continual funding source that we, I always thought was part of the plan. I think Heidi and I talked about, and we have a meeting with Flagler Beach to meet with them on July 24th at their regularly scheduled meeting to go over the concept of MSBU. Although Flagler Beach can't jump in, or Beverly Beach can't jump in, jump in this year, we're going to give them the concept and we're going to present what we can. I just think it was a, I just think it's not too late. I think it's not a, I, I don't know that we're looking at this taxing district correctly or benefit unit correctly. I know there, there are many people in the hammock anticipating this MSBU, and I don't know that we fully executed based on what our timeline was back in 2024.
So if I could, I'll start. And then if it's something that Legal needs to weigh in on, since you referenced the memo that he sent. So we've talked about the creation of an MSBU and an MSTU for probably, I don't know, at least two years. And so it's taking multiple different forms, we'll say. So when we talked about construction of the beach, we weren't looking at using an MSBU or an MSTU. It was for the ongoing maintenance because it is two separate things in our world, even though it is all related to the beach. If there was the willingness, there's a couple of different things that play into this. If we were able to get the cities on board earlier in the year, then yeah, we probably would have done the MSBU because it serves a different path moving forward. Because when you look at Flagler Beach, they're already constructed. So they're already on the clock per se for their next interval. Or if there's a need for a local match, where's that local match coming from? That would have been the best time to do it, but the discussions kind of fell apart about whether or not we were going to enact an MSBU. But all is not lost. There's still time. When we went forward last year, I believe it was in December, that we went through the process of identifying the Northern 10. The reason why it would be needed in the Northern 10 would be that you do have a section of the beach that is not eligible for FEMA CATG reimbursement. But there's another way to get there that we're working on. We had a conversation on Friday. This is something that Legal is working on with the, that area of the beach that currently does not, is ineligible for CATG. And the only reason why they're not eligible for CATG, although we have a perpetual easement in that area, we don't have the dedicated funding, which could take the form of an MSBU. It could take the form of a near-local agreement or some sort of an agreement with that group to pay us, which would then allow us to move forward with assuming all of the responsibility for the beach in that area. And that's what FEMA is looking for. Because even though we have a perpetual easement, we have not fully taken on the responsibility of doing the work because we don't have a funding mechanism. So in the Northern 10, the area would probably be north of Varn Park, south of Malacampera. It's that stretch of the beach that's not eligible for CATG. The only way around that is to have the MSBU to provide the funding at the local level. So then the county could assume that responsibility. There is another way to do it minus the MSBU because it's kind of a little wonky if we're going to do the MSBU for only a portion of the Northern 10, not the whole, because it's not necessarily needed for the CATG. But is to enter into a different agreement with the areas from north of Varn, south of Malacampera, to have separate agreements similar to the beach plans that we have right now, where we came back and we're doing a 8.8 million dollar project, and then we've got another 5.4 million dollar project, where those entities came to the table with funding. So it's similar to that, where you would have an agreement that would be in place, where they would be contributing money for the local match of a CATG project. But that would go away when an MSBU was created. So it'll solve the issue, the immediate need for the funding at the local level for CATG. And that would go away, that local funding would go away when an MSBU was introduced. But it would give the county the opportunity to fully commit to that perpetual easement and to take on the maintenance responsibility. So we talked, we had a meeting, probably three and a half hours on Friday, followed up by multiple conversations with people both internally and externally, to see if that would be supported as a path moving forward until the MSBU could be fully committed to next year and gives us time. The critical part really is Flagler Beach because they have no funding. I could be wrong. Unless the city set aside local funding as part of their budget, that is more of a critical path because there is no funding set aside for the Army Corps, you know, renourishment, or if you had outside of the Army Corps area, if you had the non-federal tapers, if they were destroyed by a storm, you're going to need a local match and there isn't one identified. So the whole MSBU discussion, like I said, it's kind of taken multiple conversations and turns and development. But it really depends on how you're looking to apply it and where on the beach and what is it needed for. We have a path for the Northern 10, doing this other method. And I know that we've got representatives in the room today that could probably talk about whether or not they agree with this in theory. But that is the path that we're moving forward to drafting an agreement and modifying the perpetual easement that would shift that responsibility over to us. It would meet with the FEMA requirement. So I don't know if that answers it, but, so it's kind of like that MSBU was needed for multiple different things, but primarily the huge focus is for the ongoing, whether it's a storm or the renourishment. And it was kind of brought, brought up or brought up in discussions that we wouldn't look to do it as part of the construction because we didn't charge the people south of the Northern 10 for coming to the table with funding. We just arbitrarily applied funding received at a starting point and started moving north. And then as we start moving north and we run out of funding, is it fair and equitable to charge the people there when no fault of their own, we applied the money somewhere else. It could have been applied in their area, but we chose to apply it somewhere else. So I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of what we've talked about over the last probably two years. Minus the new discovery last Friday with this arrangement of an agreement to satisfy the perpetual easement requirement.
Well, it is, but it, it is, but it isn't. I, I just see this as a very large priority as we, and I'm, I'll be making it very evident in my conversations with the interviews for the county attorney, but. but I didn't see Sean saying it's dead for this year, but I hear you saying that. So there's lots of plans, or discussions, or whatever. As long as we're capturing all this, as we move towards identification of a long-term standing plan, and as long as we have something that we can substantiate with the state of Florida, when they come to us and say, "Where's your match?" I don't know that it needs to be in a document. I don't know how you codify how we're doing this, other than being in Ms. Heidi and Mr. Jorge's brain. But hopefully, we're getting all this in some kind of a document that the state... We can legitimize with the state, so that they know how these decisions have been made. But again, I sat up here in December, as a novice, I will admit it, but I was under the impression that this was done and was going to move forward for 2026. We missed it. I just want the public to know, we missed it, and we will... This will be a high priority for spring of this year, moving forward to next tax season.
I didn't hear that it was missed. I just heard that there's two options. One is through an agreement with the ownership groups, or you follow Mr. Moylan's timeline. I haven't heard that we've missed the opportunity for either one of those yet.
Well, no. If the theory is that Mr. Moylan's timeline isn't ready to accept the funds, because we're not doing work in that area, or we're not maintaining that area, then it's just possibly... It's my misunderstanding of what an MSBU is. I didn't realize the legwork and the construction had to be done in order for the MSBU to kick in. So if we didn't have Reach Two and Reach Three... Or Reach Three is a constant maintenance program, if you ask me, but Reach Two wasn't part of the MSBU, so some of it was, right? From Varn Park, oh, from Painters Walk north? Varn Park?
It would pick up in the...
Beverly Beach, from north of Beverly Beach?
Painters Hill, north of Beverly.
Right. I didn't realize it tied to a construction project. So if it ties to a construction project and were maintenance-only, then that was my misunderstanding, but...
It could be either/or. It could be construction, or it could be maintenance, but when we were building it as staff, we were building it to construct... Or to the maintenance side, because, as I said, when the county received funding, we received maybe 40, 50 million. We, internally as staff, applied it into an area. It could have been applied into the unincorporated area. We chose to apply it somewhere else, therefore, the people that live outside of the unincorporated got the advantage of not having to contribute anything, when we could have applied it somewhere else.
When all this ends up, there's 17 billion cubic feet of sand on that beach, and as long as we can pay for it, I really don't care who benefits from it. We're all part of the same brotherhood here. I mean, we're the county. So if we got to move our markers all around to get this done, again, I just think it was a missed opportunity for some funding that I thought was going to happen. So we don't need to belabor this. It's not going to happen, so let's get thinking. What if something happens with these dredges, and we don't get Reach Two? Well, I hope and pray to God we get Reach Three done, or at least the eight million portion. How long are we going to kick that can? So let's get the funding identified, and let's get it rolling. We're all going to benefit from it, no matter who pays for it. It's... We're going to also be going after more state money. So every time state money comes in, it just seems like it's a little... It's not defined, but I know in your guys' brains it's defined. In my brain, it isn't. So let's just make sure we work towards getting on board and getting the MSBU or TU, whatever benefits the whole coast, and get it started. And it's going to start with education in Flagler Beach, I get it. Beverly Beach is going to be another obstacle, but we can't miss the Northern Ten next year. We just... We can't miss it.
We don't anticipate it, and I think one of the challenges that you have is, it has to be tied to a very specific dollar amount that has been engineered, and that's why it can't be like, "Oh, well, it could be this, or it could be that," or like... So we have to take a very narrow focus, which is why we chose the ongoing maintenance, monitoring, and renourishment, because we know the estimated cost from our engineering consultant. So I can't use it to like mix multiple activities. It has to be a finite amount, and then the way that you charge it, or, you know, come up with the cost to the person, you have to demonstrate the benefit received, and they all have varying benefits that they're receiving, whether it be on proximity to the ocean, whether it be the value of their property. So that's why we need to pick a path and stick with that path, because we can't move midstream. And I feel like this year, we went kind of a different direction, which then causes us to not enact it this year, but to do it. It's not really a missed opportunity, per se, but definitely, we can continue to work on it. We plan on continuing to work on it. We do have 8.1 million available for next year in the budget, which Ansley's already working on a application for reimbursement for that next pot of money. I think we typically get about half of it back, so that way, it gives her the ability to go after additional state dollars. And it'll introduce a new revenue, although it might not be an MSBU. It's similar. It's going to be coming direct pay from the other areas to help support the program. So in addition to the 8.1, whatever we're able to capture from the communities north of Varn, all the way up to Malacampera, will be additional funding to go into that pot. But the 8.8 million dollar project, it did start. They already are hauling sand for that project. I don't remember off the top of my head, from Friday's discussion, when they anticipated to be done, but I thought it was August or September? Do you... September 1st? September 1st, that'll be done. So they're already making good progress. They're ahead of schedule. So we have things moving in the right direction there.
As this wasn't specifically information presented to workshop this specific item, can we do this in the beginning of August? Is there a benefit to looking at this, so everybody's on the same page as what options are available? Obviously, there's no timeline if you're working with the association, so then beating expedient, but the one that has the timeline is the MSBU. So 20 days before the 15th, it seems to be the critical point. So if there's some clarification that we can make in the beginning of August, of which of those two paths we're going to pursue?
So we're not looking to use the MSBU for fiscal year '26.
Okay.
So that's why we left it off here, where it says zero, because in order to do that, and again, because we've changed our path multiple times, we have to have reaffirmation from the outside engineer on describing the methodology that we're applying it. We had the one study that was done, as you recall, from PFM, kind of looked at the different models, and we kind of looked at it a little bit differently. But that's the... Solidifying that approach on how we proportion each cost is what we're working on now, similar to what they did up in St. John's County. Our engineering staff reached out to them to take a look at their consultant, to look at the model that they used. But again, it's not something that we would be enacting for fiscal year '26. It would be '27. But it will be lined up and ready to go. Certainly, if you want to talk about the other agreement at another meeting...
By that time, you should have more information, I guess, to be able to...
Well, if something to bring back to the board, yes. So here's the proposed millage rate for fiscal year '26. Collectively, this represents a slight reduction of .0543 mils from the previous year. And then, in closing, the fiscal year '26 tentative budget reflects a continued alignment with the board's policies and strategic priorities. Investing in public safety, infrastructure, and core services, as well as our employees. Maintaining fiscal responsibility through increased reserves and a reduced millage rate. I thank you all for your leadership and the guidance throughout this process, as we work together to build a strong, sustainable future for our community. There is one thing, I think, on the next slide, which, as a final decision point, based on how the tentative budget was currently prepared, the board may wish to consider whether to take formal action to shift the entire one cent of that TDC project funding into the TDC beach restoration project. This would align with how the tentative budget was prepared. As you recall, you had the one penny going already into the beach. This would take the second penny out of capital projects and reallocate it. And it may be only a temporary thing, but it is used in next year's budget.
Next year's budget includes the entire...
The 8.80 times two, so the 1.76, yes.
And that would be for 2026?
It's part of fiscal year '26 budget. So I believe when we went to the TDC, they've already authorized you to have half of it. This would just be taking board action to take the other half, which would be two full pennies for the beach. And I believe this requires a supermajority.
That was in my plan.
That was our... We discussed that at the last meeting, didn't we? And the meeting before that, too, I believe, in the last workshop.
Any other discussion on that? I know, having... Being at the TDC meeting when this was discussed, I know there's... The city specifically, you know, was against removing the money in their grant program, which was, you know, I think where the TDC was leaning to continue to fund the grant program. But that's, you know, the city of Palm Coast was specifically targeting the... Maintaining the grant program. That was the one counterargument to allocating the entire penny.
I'm still for the two cents, the extra penny, or the extra half-cent, whichever. We need it. We need it for the beach. And it's something... It's one of our few resources, and we have urgency and need. You know, just have to transfer our efforts a little bit differently, in my opinion, so we can get the beach off to a great start, especially next year.
I'm okay with it for the year.
Mr. Hanson, anything? Kind of torn to support the TDC.
It's hard. It's very hard. It's very hard.
They had good arguments, you know, back and forth.
Right. But it does require a supermajority here.
Right.
Only one dissenting. And I did publicly state that I would support their decision, whatever it was, so...
It's okay. It's still four to one.
Right. I know this, you know, we're down to the scraping for funding.
It's for the year, correct? It's for the year? We'll look at it, yes.
It's one year.
Yeah.
Okay. You need directions. This is a workshop. We will just... Since it's built into the budget, when we move to the special...
The next meeting, you could take action.
Right. But we'll be... It's included in the budget, so there won't be a special vote for this.
Actually, you would be adopting an ordinance, so we will bring that forward for you.
Okay.
At this next meeting coming up?
As long as I can get the legal ad in time. No, no, not today's meeting. I meant...
That's okay. Thank you.
So we have to adopt an ordinance to take out of the TDC anything that they did not recommend to us to take?
Yes, because it's already in an ordinance, the allocation of the pennies.
Okay.
And that's called our plan, our tourism plan.
Okay.
We would be amending that for a year by ordinance.
So by this four-to-one consensus, we'll maintain the tentative budget? That's the direction you wanted?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
And before we leave this, could I bring up one subject or one request? I noticed that a lot of our subsidies to outside organizations did not get sliced as bad as Flagler Beach did on the lifeguard program. I'm going to ask my colleagues to consider, if not the full $100,000, or 90, I think, could we do something for Flagler Beach and not mess up your numbers, Ms. Heidi? We got a hit on that, and I think it was communication, as well as the fact that Flagler Beach does provide the lifeguard, the only lifeguard program in... It's been a subsidy as long as I know. We've never paid for it. It's just a donation to their lifeguard program, so that we can partially fund, I think it's Six North, or Five North, and Five South. And again, to take 100% of it away at a time when we didn't do that to anyone else, I'd like to ask for reconsideration on that item, if it's not going to affect you in a negative way.
We would just move stuff around. I think the budget number was 106, 106,000.
Again, that's the time now to give her direction on that, so it can be adjusted between now and the...
Yeah, I'm just asking for consensus, to see if we can... If there's any flavor to do that. I think this would be a good time to do it, if we can. I don't know how to do amendments to the budget, because it's not approved yet, so now's the time to bring it up, if we want something changed.
Is this just for the year, or are you asking us for the year? Okay.
And I want to put on the record that I was not aware that we were going to be removing lifeguards. Or, you know, I didn't know that it was our duties to supply Flagler Beach with lifeguards. I thought that would be an in-house situation, so...
It's not our duty. That's on our list of things we don't have to do.
Right.
We don't have to do that.
It's a subsidy. Believe me, their lifeguard programs are a lot more than $100,000.
But I have to say, after seeing the deer rescue on television, it broke my heart. And we need safety. We've had a lot of emails, I'm sure. I'm assuming everybody on the board has seen those, and there is a concern, and public safety's number one. So I don't have an objection to it at this point, if we can add it.
There's a correlation between, you know, safe beaches, beaches with lifeguards, and the draw for tourists to go to beaches with lifeguards and safety and built-in. It's not, you know, again, like Commissioner Hanson said, it's not required, but there's a lot of overlap in a lot of what we do. I'm okay for the one year. I think we continue to negotiate, to have those discussions about adequate funding for them.
The years of Jaws, I had to watch it twice this week, so I just, you know, I know it's hard to get lifeguards, because there's pools being closed, because there's no lifeguards to be found, so...
Commissioner Hanson, a yea or nay?
Do what?
Unlock lifeguard, adding it back? Yea or nay?
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Panarin?
Just for the year.
I'm okay. Commissioner Carney?
Yep.
Commissioner Richardson, okay. On that, I want to also just have a clarification discussion on the adult daycare. I know it's built into the budget for the... The entire funding is built in for this, in this budget, but we're... I think the consensus was to terminate by December, or some date specific, and...
No, it wasn't unanimous, because I'm not for that.
Right. Well, the one thing I had in discussions with... Right, well, the one thing I had in, in discussions with, with users of, of the daycare facility was, and my discussions leading up to that was, hopefully that we would be able to phase it out so that existing users wouldn't be bumped, or at least look at efficient, more efficient models. I think it, our decision affects whether people get terminated this year or next year, and I know it doesn't affect the budget. Budget is, as I understand, it's fully funded for this year, but I guess we could have another discussion on exactly what we want to do with adult daycare, if it is going to be closed shop, or if there's a way to continue with the current users until they are no longer needed or we outsource it. There's outsourcing options as well, so that we don't have to house this, this specific function in our building, in our buildings. But I'm not comfortable personally with just shutting the doors by December, but that was the direction, I think, that Heidi had from the last meeting, so...
So it's staying, right now is the budget that we're getting ready to pass. It's fully funded through fiscal year 26. We're active. And so the, the request you're saying is to, to leave it fully funded and allow them to continue utilizing it while we work on, A, shutting it down, B, finding outsourcing, or C, a better program?
Right, I think the direction was, it was going to be shut by December. My suggestion is that we, we continue to look at other models or to look at ways of phasing it until it's no longer needed. My discussions with existing users was just that it, it does, you know, there's a, especially for those that are currently using it, becomes burdensome and finding those other options, and they've had, they are using multiple options, not just us, but just to be sensitive of those that currently are using it without having to commit to, you know, expanding it, which is not on the table. It's just a matter of how do we, how do we phase it out? So that I guess the, if...
I think our capacity is 25, but we actually have 18, was the report that I got. So if you don't actively recruit new, new patients, right, we can take that position that we don't, we're not taking on new patients?
It just depends on the direction from the board. I mean, you could phase it out where you're not actively pursuing or allowing new people to join.
Right, right.
That is an option.
And then as people fall off the program?
Right, and if there's an efficiency model that, that we adapt to for the next budget cycle, so that it could be...
Well, I think if you look at Medicaid reimbursement, I think we're already overstaffed, so it might be a staffing thing, I don't know, but I, I know you can't staff up to this level, and then next week it's lower, so you, I know it's hard to do that, but there might be more and more efficient way to deliver the service. We just need to study it.
I guess the, the decision is whether there was, there was consensus to close it by December, and I just was revisiting it to see if we wanted to have it open through the, through this year, but during this year, we work on, on figuring out the best way to fix it and to not, and to phase out the existing users that we have.
Yeah, we workshop it in September and have a, you know, because I think, you know, to her point, not adding new people, but also saying if you don't use this service within X amount of time, you come off the roll.
Right.
As part of our phase-out program, you know what I mean? So that, you know, we'll have more accurate numbers, so maybe we can workshop in September. It's in there for the year, if we have to, you know, if we leave it, you know, we come to the decision to allow them to, then they'll be here for the year.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Hanson?
I think that's a more gentle approach.
I think it should be open for the year.
Okay. Commissioner Pennington?
I think we, we can leave it fully funded and, and talk about it in a workshop as to how to best phase it out.
Okay.
With that, that's fine.
Commissioner, and Commissioner Richardson?
And I think we have to do a little bit more of a, I'm not against the timeframe we're talking about. I think we have to do a bigger dig into what services are actually being performed and timing, and, you know, just look at the value of what we're getting. I think it was on a value basis, not on a personal basis.
Yeah.
That's my concern, is the monies that we're spending for what and where. Of course, we want to give all our residents the opportunity to be comfortable with it.
Does that give you direction, Ms. Petito?
I think so. It is fully funded for the year, so we're not going to start planning to shut down by December 31st. We'll come back for a workshop in September where we can bring the department back and have a deeper dive into what this looks like and come up with some different plans.
That'd be very helpful to make that decision.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, anything else up? We'll go ahead and open up for public discussion.
Can you go to other items first, please? Six?
Again, did you want to have just public discussion? Yeah, we'll go to other items.
Okay, thank you. I asked HR to pull a couple of county attorney contracts from other local areas. I believe they were sent to you. I wanted a chance to workshop the contract. I also wanted to see what a more robust contract looked like, which I believe we were provided with, three very good examples. We're going to be negotiating, not us personally, but on our behalf, a new contract in the, in the short term, so I was wondering if we could also workshop what our, our new contract will look like, so that we can give direction to staff for an attorney contract. Ours is very dated, and I would not like to present that to anyone.
Within the, I don't disagree, I mean, that's part, we did talk about, about the attorney contract and in the timeline. I don't remember how this fits into the timeline that we've got about when we would bring an attorney contract forward, before, after the selection, after the selection, I'm assuming...
I would think we'd update it before. We won't have time?
Well, the selection, the interviews are next week.
Right.
Let's just say one of those folks makes it through.
They're going to have a timeline.
Right. So August, can we do this in August? Do we, we only have one meeting in August, right? No, we have two.
We have two.
You should have two. I believe you're meeting with your applicants this week.
Right.
And then at some point, and I don't know if it's more appropriate for each one of you, if you have particular things in the contract that you like or want to see included, maybe share that with legal and your HR director, so when they come back with a draft agreement for your consideration, some of those things are included.
That's a good idea.
I personally like the St. John's one, but you guys can look it over. Do we, do we give staff, or do we have our own internal legal department present it or prepare it? Or do we outsource that to another legal department, another law firm?
In the past, it's been internal. I can only speak from my experience.
The internal, the internal, guys?
It's been internal. I would assume internal.
Okay, thank...
Tell me, couldn't it be discussed internally rather than outside counsel?
Just the drawing up of it.
So they're familiar with it?
Well, but the negotiation's going to be with our HR director, correct? Heidi, he will, he will actually take the role on this?
He will be taking the role and working with legal to develop a contract. That's why I thought if you could share your input on the different ones.
It's going to be a two-way contract, so they're going to have just as much input as we are.
Correct.
Okay.
And as chair, I'll be working with HR as we draft it up.
Anything else? Okay. All right, with that, we'll go ahead to public comment, if there's anybody that wishes to speak on any of our items today.
Yeah, good afternoon. I still, I still keep on losing my voice, so I apologize for that. Greg Davis, Hammock Dunes Owners Association. Regarding, regarding the Northern Ten and the beach, you know, let me say this, first of all, there's some questions on the truck project. The trucks project is going extremely well. We've been working collaboratively with county and staff. We've been doing weekly meetings with staff. We did my terminology and IPR and process review last Friday on the program, and it's running ahead of schedule. I think that everybody's on the same page, that we're expecting a, probably maybe a challenging hurricane season, and it has to get done by September 1st, if not earlier. Now, the contractor's not telling us specifically, but it does look like they're ahead of schedule, and hopefully will get done by September 1st. With regard to the alternative model for funding?
Okay.
We have been somewhat briefed on that, and I got to tell you that it creates no difficulty from my point of view for HDOA. There's no impact on our owners, we are already reserving funds and things like that, and are more happy. We have to get something done. We have to protect our $8.8 million investment that's going in right now. I think, as you're aware, there is no federal funding grant right now available for, you know, for Flagler County from FEMA, from federal. Category B funding was changed on January, January 6th of last year, making it very sporadic, if not impossible, for the county to receive category B funding, which is the short-term kind of funding you've been getting. It requires flooding or requires overwash right now. That project by FEMA was told if that application went forward, that it would not be successful. Now, what does that mean? Okay? We were able to go forward and identify another grant program from the state with a 50% match. That 50% match was $4.4 million from the county, of which Hammock Dunes is providing $2.2 million for that. Had the category G funding been approved by FEMA, okay? FEMA's match on that is 75%, with the state matching another 12.5%, leading the total local share at 12.5%, meaning our total county contribution would have been under $1 million. It's over $3 million difference itself. So we can't wait or delay going forward on, on eligibility for category G. Can't kick it down the road. I'm prepared, once I get the documentation, to bring it in front of our board at our next board meeting, which is in a week, for, you know, for our formal approval. I see no objection coming there. So I'm hoping that this board will move forward on that alternative, because that's the only, that's the only game we have in town. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
David Eckert, Cali del Sur. What's occurred today is a little bit shocking to me, so I am not as well-prepared as I typically am to make comments, but I think we've today accomplished the separation from this year's budget process versus the shoreline management issue. Because of the actions that you're putting forward, we have to, to protect yourselves, you have to separate the two issues now, because the budget is in total conflict with the approach that we were taking relative to the tie-in to the state and federal processes necessary, and also the engineering processes to take the shoreline forward. So I hope you realize that, that you have a conflict between this year's budget process. You don't have a long-range plan, and now you have conflict. You have money sitting in your coffers from the Ian and Nicole grants from the state level. You don't have proper ILAs with Flagler Beach or with Beverly Beach, so you have money that has to be spent by the middle of 2027 relative to Phase Two or Reach Two, and so you have a mess relative to trying to bring all of these projects together, and you may have a legal mess also. So what I would recommend to you, and I'd like to have some more time to think about this and make other comments in future meetings, but what you have to take as a grassroots is you have a seven-year emergency declaration from the county taking place every, every meeting. You have a qualitative beach management plan in place that the BOCC has approved. You have not now funded that. It's now in operating funds, it's not in earmarked funds, and you have money that has to be spent by the middle of 2027, and you're in very, very large danger to be in violation of Statute 161 to spend that money. You do not have inter-local agreements that are pertinent to this spending in Flagler Beach or Beverly Beach. You do not have Flagler Beach providing future funding for the Army Corps project. You do not have Flagler Beach collecting money. You have not put in place the MSBU at $160 a lot, so you do not have the buildup of reserves to be able to do Reach Two, Reach Three to the north, so you have a total scrambled eggs mess based upon the inaction of this. Now, you can get out of that. You're, this is not a done deal, that it's dead, and there's a pull-your-hair-out kind of a situation, but you have to realize that you are in major conflict between the budget process and the beach management plan.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Davis, I live on Ocean Shore Boulevard in Painters Hill. Following on what David just said, the Northern Ten Mile MSBU versus this new DRI 5.4 mile quasi, quasi MSBU to solve the FEMA CATG problem eligibility in the DRI isn't the biggest problem that you have. Bigger problem, David pointed at it, is, is in supporting the Reach Two project from Seventh Street North to Varn Park, which was the, the area that the county has chosen to spend the Ian and Nicole money. This is state Statute 161 funds that require local funding in addition to the permits. The reason that the area, and that money was, was given to the county for R3 to R101, it was for the whole, the, the whole shoreline. The reason that the area from Varn Park down to Seventh Street was selected is that that's an area that you can get permits. The, the, the joint coastal permit and the permitting of placing the sand was possible there. It's not possible north of Varn Park because of the rock. Eventually, we'll get the permits up there, but that's the place where you can do it now. The, the, the local funding requirement in 161 isn't met without the Northern Ten Mile MSBU. That, that supplies the local funding mechanism that 161 requires. I'm not convinced that you're allowed to place sand under 161 if you don't have local funding for maintenance in place. I, I still think it's possible to, to do the Northern Ten Mile MSBU. I don't, I don't see the, the time crunch that prohibits it. The schedule for it's still possible. I would encourage you to find a way to get it done. Start collecting money for it and have it in place for the next 50 years, 15 years, but then renewable. That's the biggest problem you've got. You don't have a way to, 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 to support the dredge project that's coming next year. Once, I'll say it again, 161 requires local funding for maintenance. You don't have it outside of the, you don't have it in Flagler Beach, you don't have it in Beverly Beach. You will have it in the area north of Beverly Beach, in the MSBU area, if you do the MSBU. I think you should do it. I think you should do it.
All right, thank you.
Be interesting.
I thought it was coming up. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Close public comment. We will be back here at 5 o'clock for our regular business meeting. Oh, special meeting. We are going to adjourn and reopen for, thank you, for the special meeting. So, we'll go ahead and take a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Can we just address that one? Are we in conflict? Does anyone here see the conflict?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have 8.1 million in funding this year that we set aside using Advalorn tax, TDC money, part of the half-cent sales tax. And were the statements made correct that we do not have local funding to move into Phase, or I'm sorry, Reach 2? Are we, is Ainsley here? Is anybody here? No.
We have construction money for Phase 2. We do not have renourishment money for any part of the beach.
So, then what's the 8.1 million?
Without renourishment money, without a dedicated source of funding for the renourishment of the beach, excuse me, we are not qualified to get state funding.
So, why 8.1 million? And why is it in operating and not the way it's required to be or where it's supposed to be?
The funding is allocated where it's supposed to be. It's in the beach management fund.
Okay.
It's 8.1 million.
Correct.
What we have, and I'd have to pull up Florida Statute 161, and I would look to Ainsley probably for some guidance along with legal, yet a couple of different things. I believe we already have inter-locals with Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach to be able to do the projects that we're doing, because it involved the work that we've already done in Flagler Beach. Beyond that, I don't think that Flagler Beach and Beverly Beach have any ongoing funding.
Correct.
So, I think that might be part of the point taken. The other-
But it would come back on us, right? It would be on us.
Not necessarily, because there's nothing in your agreement with them that says you're going to maintain it in perpetuity. It was to handle the project that was done. But then, we would have to look to say who's going to be responsible ongoing. And that's where we looked at either the entire thing or each municipality is going to have to take over their own. I think the comment is more directed at looking at a plan for ongoing maintenance. The first thing that we have is going to be the construction, continuing the construction. So, if we don't have, the 8.1 million would end up being applied, as it is today, as part of that beach management plan, would go towards the construction phase of the next reach, which would be 3.
Unless we needed it for-
Unless you needed it for storm recovery or something like that. But if it's storm recovery in an incorporated area, it's going to be on those cities or towns to come to the table with funding. But we do need to have a long-term plan. What we've allocated is 8.1 million. Part of it, a million of it's like carryforward from the current budget. But it's not necessarily recurring revenues that are going to be there every year, because you have a lot of other needs.
All right, well, again, I'm going to refer back to this memo. We would have to hold a public hearing. So, all of this has been done, except for the public hearing, right? Everyone's had their chance. We had an engineered consultant to come in. We had the presentation on the MSBU. We had the presentation on the MSTU. We threw out some numbers during all that work. So, none of that qualifies for setting up an MSTU or MSBU. None of that work that was done by that company has, can help us in this.
It would be a starting point. I think we would still need an engineered study. And they could use that as a data point. But PFM envisioned a county-wide assessment. And I think they did reduce it when we asked them to go back to the drawing board, and they pared it down to eliminate the West Side. But they did not look at just an assessment in the hammock. That wasn't the goal of their study. So, if you wanted to do it this year, we would have to get an engineered study. I don't know exactly how long that takes. But that's, as I see it, the only obstacle. I mean, we can handle the mailing. We can do a mail merge. We can get the notices out. We can get the newspaper notice. We can do all that. Right now, we would, what we really are missing is that engineered study.
And nobody knew that this whole time?
Nobody knew that?
It depends on what path the board wants to take. And so, a lot of these steps needed to be done earlier on, instead of continuing the dialogue and continuing with unknown direction. We need to hone in on a direction. You have a little over a month. So, the mailing would have to go out no later than August 18th to hit the deadline for public notice. Has to be 20 days in advance. If you mailed it on the 18th, they should get it by the 21st, 22nd, which would be the 20 days ahead. Essentially, you have probably five weeks. When we met on Friday to talk about path moving forward, it didn't make sense to do an MSBU just in the area, like I said, from Varn Park up to Malacampera.
But you just heard why. You just heard why it does make sense.
You have another-
Unless you disagree with state statute.
You have another alternative way of getting there in that area, which is the inter-local that we've talked about earlier that we were coming back to you. That would satisfy that area. It's not a perfect situation, but it is a stopgap. It would be replaced by the full-blown MSBU, unless you can get outside engineering company, which is why I mentioned we were reaching out to St. John's. The methodology that they use, they would take the PFM model as a starting point and see how quickly they could do it. It would mean that they have five weeks. Could they get it in five weeks? I don't know. But that's why we had the conversation on Friday. We weren't intending to do the MSBU this year.
The, we have difficulty in the point about the ongoing maintenance. 160 is the reference, correct? We can't use the unincorporated SBU for those areas in Reach 2, because it's, they're all facing incorporated cities. And they're responsible. So, I mean- So, I mean, that's where I see the major conflict in that we can't use, utilize an MSBU to satisfy that requirement. We had a plan in place, but that now we're, now we are in a whole new approach of trying to do this almost year by year, but also coming up with some other creative alternatives.
We are going to be shifting over that extra tourism tax, the extra penny.
Right.
And keep in mind, something that Ainsley mentioned previously, maintenance is sometimes, has dual meaning. You have, maintenance is sometimes meant as a full-on renourishment to replace lost sand. But it's also used in a different context of smaller things. Fixing escarpments, even just removing litter. So, in terms of the FEMA eligibility, we need to start exercising some dominion over that beach, even if it's somebody on a four-wheeler patrolling and looking for issues. Those sorts of things are what FEMA are going to want to see.
Well, I do want to report that Flagler, I met with Flagler Beach City Manager, and they are doing everything in the Army Corps, Page 12 of the maintenance plan. They're doing it every day. They're checking their walkovers. They're checking escarpments. They are on turtle patrol. We all know there's a turtle patrol out there. It goes all the way from Hammock all the way down to Volusia County. They are all faced with looking. They have their beach, they have their beach cleanup every month. They are doing everything according to the Army Corps maintenance plan that they gave them after that project was finished, up to and including the inspection done of the beach before turtle season. So, it's all done. There's no reason to believe it's not being done. Where we're suffering right now is what happens if we get another major storm and we have to rebuild the beach? That's where we're at. And all we can do is take it month by month. And we're going to meet, and Flagler Beach is going to have to come onboard, or not.
And Commissioner, that's excellent. We're going to need some of those same activities in the hammock to address Mr. Davis's concern with the FEMA eligibility in that area.
And maybe they'll get a volunteer group to do it, or staff, or somebody. Somebody's going to have to put the eyeballs on the beach. There's no doubt about it.
All right. Any other follow-up? Motion to adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn. Anybody need a break, five minutes? Nope, ready to go? Okay. Let me get my script. All right. Is everybody ready to go? Okay. Welcome, everybody. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners Special Meeting. This is in, to adopt the tentative budget. This is, again, Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, Monday, July 14th. It is 3:19 PM. If everybody could stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome again, everybody. This is a special meeting to approve the tentative budget. Mr. Brower, did you want to start off? Do I need to read anything to get us going?
Mr. Chair, John Brower, Financial Services. No, we can go. I just saw public comment was the second thing on there.
Okay. I'm missing the agenda for the special meeting.
It's on the other side.
On the screen. I'm used to paper, sorry. All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. If there's anybody wishes to address the commission on this, anything to do with the tentative budget.
David Eckert, Kelly Del Sur. Tying into the previous workshop comments that I made, I think that the budget is not a problem to approve in its current format. I would not recommend anything that I think is tangible to make a significant change relative to the issues that I brought up in my comments. I think that the budget couldn't go forward. It's not helpful to the budget, to the beach management plan and any of the other responsibilities relative to the shoreline to have this budget. But I'm not against approving the budget as a tentative budget in the current configuration. The idea, though, that none of it is earmarked for the shoreline, that the MSBU is not in place, is a missed opportunity. Now, if you do want to just plug in 160 for a, per lot, for the unincorporated area for an MSBU and go forward with that, I would recommend that as a position that you would take as a change to the tentative budget and just put that in place. That's the only change that I think is necessary in the budget. So, from that standpoint, and I save my comments for other future meetings relative to other topics, but for the special meeting that you have right now relative to the budget, that's the only things that are pertinent. I do disagree, though, relative to the issues relative to the spending of the money from the Ian and Nicole state money and the other comments that are being made from staff. I think it would be important for the BOCC members to get input other than the staff relative to some of these conclusions, because I do not agree with those, and I am well-researched.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment regarding the tentative budget? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Close public comment. And we'll proceed with the proposed millage rates and public hearing dates.
Mr. Chair, John Brower, Financial Services. Got two items here to be considered. The first, item three, A and B are related to our millages. General Fund operating millage rate is being proposed at 7.8695 mils. It's the same as FY '25. Will generate $135,664,707, which is an increase of $12,472,293, or 10.12%. The environmentally sensitive lands operating millage is being proposed at 0.1250 mils. It's also the same for, has FY '25 and will generate $2,154,913, which is an increase of $198,111, or 10.12% as well. The total operating millage for FY '26 is proposed to be 7.9945 mils, which is unchanged from FY '25. I think at this point, if we can do the operating millage motion?
All right, so if I could get a motion to set the maximum operating millage as identified under A?
I move to set the proposed general fund operating millage rate of 7.8695 mils. And do you want me to keep going?
Yes.
Environmentally sensitive land operating millage rate at .1250 mils for a total operating millage rate of 7.9945 mils and authorize the county administrator to execute and process the required administrative documentation.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Do we need public comment for each of these? Mr. Moyle?
That would be better.
Okay, I would assume. So, at this time, I'll open the floor for public comment on the motion to set maximum operating millage. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. I've got a motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the voted millage rate for the ESL of our missensitive lands debt is proposed to be .0855 mils, which is a reduction of .0395 mils from FY '25. And the voted millage rate for debt issue to build the judicial centers proposed to be 0.1000 mils, which is a reduction of 0.0148 mils from FY '25. All told, the total millage rate for FY '26 is proposed to be 8.1800 mils, which is a reduction of 0.0543 mils from FY '25.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll need a motion for item B, which is to set the maximum debt service millage.
Mr. Chairman, I move to set a proposed environmentally sensitive land debt service millage rate at 0.0855 mils and a judicial-centered general obligation debt service millage rate of 0.1 mils and authorize the county administrator to execute and process the required administrative documents.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. If anybody from the public wished to address the commission on this debt service millage. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Again, motion by Commissioner Hanson, seconded by Commissioner Carney. Any questions for Mr. Brower? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, the third part of this number three item is the remaining to set the date, time, and location of the board's first public hearing, so it can also be included along with the millage rates on the trim notices that will be sent out in August.
All right. Great. This is item C. I'll need a motion to set the first public hearing date.
I'll move to establish the date, time, and location of the first public hearing to adopt the proposed millage rate and the tentative millage to be Thursday, September 11, 2025, at 5:01 PM at the Board of County Commission chambers located in Flagler County Government Service Building, 1769 East Moody Boulevard, Building 2, Bynell, Florida 32110.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Carney, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. Open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wished to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, both close public comment. Bring it back to the board. Any final questions? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item four is to establish the proposed special assessment rates for FY '26. And last year, you asked that I read these through, and so I shall.
Before you start--
Yes, sir.
Would you or could you include for each of these what the sunset date is? That would be helpful to understand these assessments.
I don't have those dates available right now. We can come back to the board with that information.
Just provide them to me. That'll be fine.
Okay. Will do. The Espinola Special Service District is $11.76 per special assessment unit. The Rema Ridge Special Service District is $14.62 per special assessment unit. The Flagler County mandatory solid waste collection and disposal is $445.20 per residential unit. North Malacampera Drainage Basin District, $30 per parcel. Marineland Acres Drainage Basin District, $435 per developed lot and $220 per vacant lot. Painters Hill Seawall Special Assessment District is $116.28 per front foot or frontage. Dunes Community Development District for Stormwater is $65.69 per residential unit. And the nuisance abatement for unincorporated Flagler County is based on the actual costs that are incurred by the county.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I'll need a motion to set the proposed special assessment rates.
Mr. Chairman, I move to set the proposed special assessment rates for FY '26 and the amounts presented by the Financial Services Director and authorize the county administrator to execute and process the required administrative documents.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hanson and seconded by Commissioner Richardson. This time, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wished to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any final questions on this for Mr. Brower?
I'd like to also know the sunset on these. I think it would be good to offer--
As Mr. Chair, we'll get that information. We'll send it out to the entire board.
Thank you, Mr. Brower.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the proposed special assessment rates? And just for clarification, Mr. Hanson, did you read the yellow heart?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just checking. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brower, to you and your staff.
Great job.
This was -- took a long time getting here. Yay.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. At this time, we do have public comment. If there's any public comment on any of the items we've reviewed under this special meeting. Public comments now open. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Any additional items that we need to take action on? Does that conclude our work for the tentative budget?
That will do it.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Just thank everybody. I know this has been a wild, wild ride. Almost there.
And the first one is always the most fun, so, all right.
He was Mr. Toad.
With that, I'll take in a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. We're adjourned. See everybody here at 5:00 for the regular meeting.